Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, November 5th, 2014 meeting of the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education. Is this meeting properly noted?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Dido.
Here.
Eliason.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Herzog.
I.
Lombarder.
Here.
Saginaw.
Here.
We have a call.
All right. Tonight, if you would all rise and follow two Washington Elementary students, Willie and Ella Saunders, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Next up on our list this evening is the student reports, and we will start with Catherine.
All right, so here's the update for Oshkosh North for the month of November. First up, we have Spartan's spectacular, and this is Polaris National Honor Society's biggest event of the year, and it was hosted on Sunday, October 26th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Fourteen clubs at Oshkosh North, each took a room, decorated it, and then when the 400 kids came later that day, they got to get a whole bunch of candy and play lots of games. And it's one of my favorite, just because of all the cute costumes, which you can see. Chem Club had one of the most popular rooms because they perform experiments for the students, and you can see Nate Fitz Henry doing that up in the upper right. French Club also had a room, and that was geared towards the littler kids. They had dried corn kernels, and they could search for prizes in them. And then Choir Room also did musical chairs. The Oshkosh North Drama Department has their fall play this weekend, November 6th to 8th, so tomorrow through Saturday, at 7:00 p.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. And it's, of course, in Oshkosh North's Jesse Hooper Auditorium. Seven dollars for adults, five dollars for students and senior citizens, but if you're a student, you can get in free with your ID. And it's actually, I'm really excited to be able to see it, its full production. It's about this older man who has to decide whether or not he's going to move in with his daughter, or he's going to try and get a roommate to make her back off. And so he settles on the roommate idea, and lots of hilarious moments come afterward, and I can't wait to see it. Also, next Tuesday, Oshkosh North will be having their fourth annual Veterans Day Assembly from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. in the fieldhouse. It includes several segments, including the history of Veterans Day, combined performances by the music department, and we have a special guest speaker, Sergeant Mark Allerman. And as well as Merrill Middle School is doing a presentation about Treats for Troops. And it's one of my favorite things we do all year, just because it includes also the community, as well as the entire school, which I think is pretty cool. So our new school improvement goal, which was just introduced to the staff this morning, is to focus on literacy, and that's to intentionally incorporate writing into every subject area, and to not only make them write more, but to teach students to tailor their writing depending on the subject that they're trying to craft a piece for. And the staff is really excited about this. They are excited to make it more obvious to the students that that's what they're trying to do, so that the students will get on board. Here's a sports update. North Football won the VFA South for the second year in a row with a 7-0 record. This was their eighth conference championship for North Football since the school began. North Boys Soccer also qualified for sectionals for the second time in three years. North hosted a slew of events, including WIA Girls Golf Regionals, Girls Tennis Sectionals, Boys and Girls Cross Country Sectionals, and Level One Football Playoffs. And this Saturday, in fact, in Nina, North and West Girl Swim will compete to decide whether or not they are elite enough for the state meet in Madison on the 15th. And so here are some upcoming events. Again, the fall play is this weekend. Veterans Day Ceremony is next Tuesday. We have the Fall Sports Banquet next Tuesday night. The Holiday Parade next Thursday, which both of the bands will be playing in, so you should come out and see that, even though I think it's going to be pretty cold. And the Blood Drive is November 26th. So as always, it's a great day to be a Spartan.
Thank you. So now, again, here's the November Board Meeting for West. To start off, the week after I had my presentation in October, we had our homecoming, so I'm going to talk a little bit about how that went. So we had a space theme, and we had a separate committee for that. Like I said, we improved a budget to put more money towards that, and we had out-of-this-world decorations. It was really great. Big success. We had great participation, especially with the new ideas that we thought of to get the school to encourage to come out to the events that we were hosting, and all of the committee goals were met and exceeded. So that's a great thing that we came out of for homecoming. I also talked about the sumo championships that we had. That was a great idea. We had lunch face-offs, so we had a couple hosts, just taking people from the crowd, and we had the champions, and then we had the showdown at the pep rally, which really energized the audience, because the pep rally, when you have something like sumos, it really, really gets them pumped up. So the pep rally, student-led this year. We had Timmy Lutz and myself direct it. Then we had the pep band kind of usher everybody in, as well as the committee ushers. We included a DECA game into our first game with the pep rally. They gave a presentation at one of our meetings, and it's cool, because they promoted their club to the students, as well as directed their own game, so it's kind of marketing on their part. And we also did a T-shirt giveaway, which we included the physics cannon, which really did get the students hyped even more, and you can see how big that is in comparison to my body. Also, like I said, the sumo champions of the week. We had a twirl team performance, which was phenomenal, and the dance team performance, which included the football team, so it was really funny to see the football players try and successfully move their bodies like the dance team. And homecoming court announcements. We ordered a lot of Ford vehicles in the parade for them to be escorted to the game. And the Trojan Races, so a lot of different games and performances set up within that pep rally. Ran very smoothly, and big thanks to the staff who helped out with that. So we had the parade, game, and dance. So thanks to Bertram for the five pickup trucks. A float competition we had going on. A lot of clubs entered and did the parade. And at the game, we had free pizza, a DJ for live music, and yes, more sumo. We had a pre-game powder puff championship, which we had games and food there, as well as a marching man performance that I talked about. As you can see up there with the picture, it went very well. We were very prepared for this, and a lot of the students and a lot of the parents came up to Mr. Singer and Mr. Wilson and congratulated them on that. And a great turnout for the dance. We sold many tickets, which was great to see. This was one of the dances that we really look back on and say, we did a great job. So we also had a costume contest for Halloween. We used our social medias to really market this. As of late, we've been using Twitter and Facebook to promo a lot of our stuff, so we had our own hashtag through Instagram and Twitter that we would do, and these students would submit their costume ideas. And then, as student government, we came together and decided who won the best groups. And the four different groups were Best Boy, Best Girl, Best Teacher, and Best Group. And you can see up there, the wide variety of costumes set up there. Very cool. WKCE, we have that going on Tuesday, November 3rd. It's for all the sophomores, paper and pencil assessment, as we were aware, and it's a part of the Wisconsin State Assessment. Just something to tell you that's coming up, so sophomores are ready for that. The Rüsselheim Exchange, it's with Germany. We have 13 students, two teachers. They are visiting for two weeks, so they get tours around Oshkosh, and thank you to Mr. Bertram, Mr. Lasse, and Mrs. Pikert, excuse me, for organizing this. Today in our AP Euro class, since we're dealing with Europe, they came in, and we got to ask them questions about their culture, and really what Europe is like. So that was really cool to see. Our class got to know more about Germany and Europe in general, so that was really awesome that we got to talk to them. State Cross Country, congratulations to Jake Rost and Lexi Brisky. Jake placed 47th, and Lexi placed 71st. We are very proud of them. And Jake, as you can see in the lower left-hand corner, had a great finish, his arms out. The Girl Swimming Conference placed fourth overall. Great job, girls. Cassie Leibly, Mackenzie Shu, Natalie Roche, Maria Langraff, Alyssa Hartl, Alyssa Levine, and Jamie Keller were all in the top eight. Congratulations. And Performances, November 4th, yesterday, we had the band concert. It was, I loved band concert last night, it was really cool. I got to play in that, and we even had a Russian Christmas song in the wind ensemble that actually went on for 15 minutes. So although long, it was very exciting, and I talked with a lot of the audience members, and they seemed to love it. So we also have musical roles decided, and there was auditions for two days, so we have that figured out. Mr. Berenson is leading that. And the Oshkosh and Appleton Parades, which the bands are going outside next week to work on, and West has, our band program has a lot of pride in what we do with the parades. So thank you, and go Wildcats.
All right. Thank you very much for that report. Next, we have their superintendent's report. Mr. Mack.
Yes, and President Wiedenhoff, I think I'll defer to Dr. Herzog, because she has guests here that tie in directly with our previous report, and then it will come back.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
I believe for the last 25 years, there has been a sister school exchange program between our own Oshkosh-West High School and Immanuel Kant Schule in Rüsselheim, Germany. And as David pointed out, we are very fortunate, and the West's community is very fortunate, to have 13 students and two chaperones this year, who are currently in Oshkosh for another few days before they continue their travels across the United States. This has been a great exchange program, and has only been possible because of the support of teachers like Frank Kronis and Uta Held, who are here from Germany, along with Pat Bertram, Kate Pikert, and Mr. Lasse, and their predecessors at Oshkosh-West. And I believe Frank and Uta wanted to make a statement about the value of this program to Oshkosh-West and to Immanuel Kant Schule of Rüsselheim. Thank you, Frank.
Thanks for the introduction.
Yeah. All of you join, please join. Mr. Bertram.
Yeah. Dear members of the school board, my name is Frank Kronis, and I'm an English teacher at Immanuel Kant Schule, Rüsselheim, Germany. My colleague, Uta Held, and I are currently chaperoning 13 German high school students from our school on this year's exchange. For more than 30 years now, your wonderful state of Wisconsin and the state of Hessen, Germany, share friendly relations, and for more than 20 years, we in Rüsselheim are fortunate to call Oshkosh-West High School our sister school. Actually, this is my eighth visit to Oshkosh this year, so. We are pleased that well over 300 American and German students have taken part in this program, which links the heart of America to the heart of Europe. The purpose of this exchange is to build strong relationships and to foster understanding between our cultures. I personally consider this program a tremendous opportunity for our students, and I believe, I believe firmly, that it provides an excellent opportunity for the growth and the development of our young people. When students return, they have a new sense of self-esteem, renewed interest in their grades and success. I always think that during the time they spent in America, their confidence and their being able to speak English must have risen almost sky-high. They're really happy to have improved their English and their confidence. Dear members of the school board, on behalf of the Rüsselheim School District Administration and on behalf of Immanuel Kant Schule, Rüsselheim, of this school community, I'd like to thank you and the Oshkosh-West School Community for being such wonderful hosts again. Teachers at West, namely Mr. Bertram, Mr. Stalflug, Mr. Lasse, Mrs. Pikert, have once again put together a most interesting and inspiring program that let our students gain insight in American school and family life, as well as in American history. In summer 2015, Immanuel Kant Schule will be hosting West students in Rüsselheim, Germany, and we are very much looking forward to that return trip. I'm positive that the American students will then gain similar insights at our place, as you have provided for our students here in Oshkosh. As for all who are part of this valuable program, be it in administration or be it in schools, my wish is that we all stay the course. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, there are some Germans here, I see.
Yes, one or two.
Mr. Dido is definitely of some Prussian ancestry, I'm pretty sure. There is a Lambaga family, I know, where I come from.
My family is aus Österreich, aber original aus Bayern.
Bayern.
Mr. Wiedenhoff.
I do not speak German.
Thank you very much.
Ganz gut. And Dr. Lombarder, is Hessen in Deutschland? Where in the country, please?
Right in the middle, basically. We come from the Frankfurt area, so.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mac.
The superintendent would love to tag along with those students next summer, so that's...
You're welcome.
Yes, we'll have to figure out how we can work that into the summer vacation.
Well, we already had administrators like Barb at all places, so there's not only that program for students, also on the inside of administration, there's people going back and forth.
Okay.
I'd love to see that.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, for the superintendent's report, good news for this being November 5th. We have quite a lengthy list. As we get into the school year, we don't really edit or censor out anything we receive, so we report on everything so far. My apologies for all the good news, but, you know, one should never apologize for good news. But Gifted Talented Art Event. Thirty gifted talented art students spent the day creating Keith Haring-inspired cutout figures, which are illustrated and personal narratives. After the panel paintings were cut out and assembled, they looked much like the images shown in the pictures on the screen. All the students' artwork was on display at the exhibition celebrating K-12 Art Education and OSD on Saturday, November 1st, at the Oshkosh-Mossonic Center during the November Downtown Oshkosh Gallery Walk. The exhibition featured artwork created by students in kindergarten through 12th grade, who are currently in the Oshkosh Area School District Art Education Program, as well as the narrative figures created by Gifted Talented Art, or GT Art. The exhibition was one of the most extensive displays of student art that the Oshkosh Area School District has presented to the public. Most importantly, the GT Art event would not have been possible without the help of the following people, who were working all day really hard to make it all possible. A big thank you to Tom Anfison, Tim Loughlin, Val Wernsch, Terri Schultz, Diane Friday, Kay Weber, Deanna Depose, and Sue Wargick. And thanks for all for the hard work on that exhibit and having a chance to observe part of that, just a fantastic event. Oshkosh North High School art students traveled to Madison for art experience. On October 23rd, 24th, Oshkosh North art students toured the University of Wisconsin-Madison Art Department to view student galleries and studios, as well as meet the faculty. Students also attended guided tour of the Chazen Museum of Art, which they saw artwork created by Gin Dine, Don Wrights, Deborah Butterfield, Beth Kavanagh Stricher, Chuck Close, Andy Warhol, and many more. South Park's Pink Panthers support a great cause. South Park Middle School hosted a Pink Out Day in support of breast cancer research and awareness. South Park Student Council sold Pink Panther Out T-shirts to raise money for the Breast Cancer Research Foundation. South Park students and staff raised $800 and turned it over to the South Park Pink on October 22nd in honor of their efforts. Oaklawn participates in the Great Lakes Great Apple Crunch. Oaklawn Elementary students join schools, preschoolers, colleges, and individuals across the Great Lakes regions, state of Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois, Michigan, Indiana, and Ohio, in celebrating both National Farm to School Month and Food Day by crunching into locally grown apples on October 23rd at noon for the first annual Great Lakes Great Apple Crunch. Joined by Todd Hanson, local farmer, and Alice in Dairyland, approximately 130 4th and 5th grade students bit into locally grown apples after a countdown by the farmer. Todd spoke about his farm and the apples, while Alice discussed Wisconsin agriculture and why we celebrate Farm to School Month in October. Scott Johantnik said that the Great Apple Crunch was a wonderful opportunity to connect students with nutritious locally grown produce, as well, such as apples. They were excited to join in the event and were pleased to be able to be a partner with Rethink and the Winnebago County Health Department in making this event happen. Merrill Middle School students selected for Middle Level Honors Band Clinic. Edward Hanson, trumpet. Alex Wallace, trumpet. Natasha Iverson, flute. And Kendra Borst, flute. From Merrill Middle School, students were selected for the Middle Level Honors Band Program at St. Norbert's College. The students were carefully chosen from hundreds of applicants from northern Wisconsin and the Upper Peninsula of Michigan. The Honors Band consists of 120 students, who will perform on Saturday, this Saturday, November 8th, 2014, at the Walter Theater at St. Norbert's College Campus. Carl Trager Middle School Life Program. Carl Trager students participated in Trager Life Celebration on Friday, October 31st. Students' names were drawn from the Trager Life Loot Collection boxes. Students received Life LIFE loot and its incentives with PBIS. Games included Card Ninja, Elephant March, Defying Gravity, and Vampire Teeth Marshmallow Transfer. I'm sure that was quite exciting. As a part of the Trager Life celebrations, drawing students also won the rights to the principal's chair for the day. They got pushed from class to class, as seen in the photo to the right, where a 6th grade student from CTMS is enjoying the ride to class. I'm not sure how much they would appreciate that long-term. I just hope our custodians were happy with what the floor looked like afterwards. Smith Elementary fundraiser. Smith Elementary PTO, along with Bergstrom Chrysler Automotive, raised $2,270 with Chrysler Drive for Kids fundraiser. With every driver on the block, Smith Elementary students received $10 award and an additional bonus, a $500 bonus for completing 150 test drives. The money raised is being used to upgrade the Smith Playground. Way to go, Smith families. We thank you for all your support. South Park Manufacturing students learned the importance of manufacturing. Thanks to Arrowhead Systems Incorporated, Mr. Jeske's engineering class are better prepared for upcoming class projects, running a manufacturing operation. Arrowhead hosted a busload of 8th grade students, providing them with not only a tour of their production and engineering facility, but also a presentation by executive staff members on career opportunities in manufacturing, the manufacturing product cycle, and why having manufacturing companies in the community is very important. South Park Middle School students are part of a citywide manufacturing tours that are being sponsored by the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Rotary, as part of Manufacturing Month. After the field trip, students applied what they had learned by participating in Oshkosh Chamber Manufacturing Essay Contest. Justine Hisler was the winner of the contest and will be awarded a $25 Chamber Gift Certificate and recognized by the Oshkosh Rotary at their monthly meeting next Monday. A copy of Justine's essay will go on display in the Technology and Engineering Showcase at South Park Middle School. Way to go, Justine. Webster Open House and STEM Night. Webster Stanley had a successful open house and STEM night on September 25th. Students and faculty from UW Oshkosh worked with Oshkosh Area School District students and their families during the event. A special thanks to Mike's Place Family Restaurant for the donation of ice cream for the event. The book fair proceeds will be added to the Webster Stanley Auditorium Fund, which is being used to renovate the performance space and to be used for concerts and celebrations. Wisconsin State Music Association State Honors Choirs. Pictured here are the Oshkosh North High School and the Oshkosh West High School participants in the Wisconsin State Music Association State Honors Choirs, which took place on Thursday, October 30th, at the Wisconsin Music Education Conference at the Overture Center in Madison. Students identified for participation and celebrated by their teachers, including the teacher being at North, Bridget Duffy, and student honored Ian Rucker. And if you've attended any musical in the last two years, you would have seen Ian, three years, constantly involved. And also pictured from West, Shelby Edwards, Brad Wolf, Ally Kent, Raleigh Katrina Rye, and Jonas Wagner, along with their proud director, Mr. Berenson. So outstanding events, and just these familiar faces as they become seniors. We're going to miss them next year, being constant performers onstage. And Merrill Elementary Literacy Night. Thanks to a grant from the National Writing Project and Kellogg Foundation, Merrill is holding a family academic literacy evening throughout the entire school year. Participants share a meal, investigate an academic area, and spend time together with the family. Each evening includes writing. September's event centered around art exploration and accumulation with the creation of six-word memoirs. October highlighted the use of community library, as well as our school library. Many local businesses have generously donated materials, prizes, and food. Merrill Elementary would like to thank the Oshkosh Public Library for sharing a story with the students and families. And the Oshkosh West news, I believe we have covered in the presentation, so we won't repeat that. And more Oshkosh West news, I think, becomes a duplicate of what already has been presented, as well as our reports on Oshkosh North. So with that completes the report and the activities of the superintendent for the last two-week period. It's always good to have help in these presentations, so thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Next on the agenda, other reports. Do other board members have reports? Barb?
I do. The Administrator Compensation Committee met last week on October 29th. There were three major topics we discussed. One was to develop a substitute administrator policy proposal, which would state that anyone serving in the role as a substitute administrator would need to hold that administrative license. That has been reviewed by Administrator Compensation Committee and will be going to the Policy and Governance Committee. Secondly, we discussed proposed substitute administrator compensation to categorize that so that it's consistent from one time to another when someone is subbing in one of those roles. And finally, Mike Nault, Executive Director of Human Resources, had conducted an administrator's salary range study with area school districts that have been defined in board policy that need to be considered when we're looking at comparables, and those results of that study will be presented to the board.
Merrill Elementary would like to thank the Oshkosh Public Library for sharing a story with the students and families. And the Oshkosh West news, I believe we have covered in the presentation, so we won't repeat that. And more Oshkosh West news, I think, becomes a duplicate of what already has been presented as well as our reports on Oshkosh North. So with that completes the report and the activities of the superintendent for the last two-week period. It's always good to have help in these presentations, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Next on the agenda, other reports. Do other board members have reports? Pardon?
I do. The Administrator Compensation Committee met last week on October twenty-ninth. There were three major topics we discussed. One was to develop a substitute administrator policy proposal, which would state that anyone serving in the role as a substitute administrator would need to hold that administrative license. That has been reviewed by Administrator Compensation Committee and will be going to the Policy and Governance Committee. Secondly, we discussed proposed substitute administrator compensation to categorize that so that it's consistent from time to, from one time to another when someone is subbing in one of those roles. And finally, Mike Nalt, Executive Director of Human Resources, had conducted an administrator's salary range study with area school districts that have been defined in board policy that need to be considered when we're looking at comparables. And those, the results of that study will be presented to the board at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Other reports?
Yes, Steve? Facility and Finance met on October twenty-third, and topics covered included the Oaklawn construction budget and where we stand with that. We're just shy of a hundred thousand dollars remaining in that allocation. The remaining, the significant things remaining yet are a shed for groundskeeping and snow-removal equipment to the tune of about thirty-five thousand as projected. Also, an upgrade to a fence to make it a little more attractive as compared to the neighboring properties, so it's a little more opaque. Also, we discussed, well, we didn't discuss, actually, the Pollock Pool Agreement carrying forward as it has in previous years, our partnership with the city for the operation of the Pollock Pool. And then Mitch Norris shared the, our decrease in borrowing costs year-on-year due to the aggregate amount being dropped by about one-point-three million. We'll see a savings of about four thousand dollars in interest expenditure. And the next meeting is on the thirteenth of November.
Thank you. Any others? All right, seeing none, we will go on to our workshop for this evening, which is Promoting Excellence for All. Stacy Frank and Stan Mack.
And actually Julie Moyer and Kim Brown joining.
Okay.
Right, got a couple reinforcements. While they're getting ranged, a little over, about a year ago, I was contacted by Tony Evers, Superintendent of Public Instruction for the state of Wisconsin, and asked about potentially our nominating a staff member representing one of our success cases in school district in Webster Stanley has been, middle school has been demonstrating, really responding quite well to the needs of minority students. And I turned to Julie, and Julie said, well, the absolute best person to potentially participate in this statewide committee to represent the needs of minority students and knowing and understand how to deliver services is Stacy Frank. Stacy has thus volunteered her time and traveled frequently to meetings to work through the project. You all have received a copy of the report that has generated out of that area. It's an area that I have a good deal of interest in, in the fact that the Oshkosh Area School District with some eighteen percent students of color in the district is about, is about one-third of what I'm used to working within minority needs in suburban Minneapolis. And the issues that our teachers face, but most of all, the issues that our students of color face are as identical to suburban Minneapolis as, even with one-third the number of students. And our need to attend to these issues and particularly focus in on what Stacy will clearly enunciate and what in our board workshop of, of about three weeks ago, talking about relationships, is really the number-one issue of being able to build success. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Julie and Kim and Stacy.
Actually, Mr. Mack, you did a great job. You actually took the whole introduction there, so thank you.
And part of the presentation, so that works out well.
Just a little attached to this subject.
So we're going to turn it right over to, to Mrs. Frank.
Promoting Excellence for All, closing the achievement gap, is the title of the task force in which I participated. The National Center for Education Statistics reported that Wisconsin's 2012 graduation rate was tied for second in the nation. Did you know that?
No. Who's, who are we tied with?
Nebraska.
And who's first?
I honestly couldn't tell you. However, the National Assessment for Educational Progress, sometimes called the Nation's Progress Report, ranks Wisconsin worst in the nation for race-based gaps in both math and reading achievement. This is why it became a big issue for Dr. Evers to, to address. So we did a study in disproportionality in our state and what that looks like. A lot of these slides you've already seen because they were in the board packet that came, so I'm not going to spend a ton of time talking about them. I just want to refer to a couple. Notice the all-student graduation rates between eighty-eight and ninety-one percent. And, but our, our lowest area, again, we looked at all of the ethnicities and breakdown, but we found that the biggest gaps were between, you know, in our black, African-American categories and our Latin, Hispanic categories. Our Asian students are actually predicted to outperform whites in, in the future, so. So they, they looked at it from every grade level, so it wasn't just, did it happen at a certain grade level? Did it happen a certain place? It happened across the board. In fact, if you look at some of, some of the data, it's not on this chart, the students actually come to us with some of those deficits. It's not something that was created by the schools. They come that way, and the gap just continues to widen as they spend their time in schools. It is not just a socially or an economically disadvantaged issue, because if you look at this specific slide, you can see that the economically disadvantaged students, that black even perform lower than that. The statistics are quite staggering. Here's the, the reading, the percentage, reading proficiency and math. So they looked at reading and math at all, all of the major grade levels. So the task force was born. Schools were closing, who were closing the achievement gap and whose achievement of students of color was growing at a rate higher than our state average were identified and recognized. Webster Stanley Middle School was one of these schools. So representatives from a cross-section of urban, rural, private, public, charter elementary, middle, high school, and varying, with varying enrollments, ethnic makeups, and economic levels were chosen. The final task force consisted of ten teachers, five principals, one instructional coach, and a curriculum coordinator. It was chaired by Dr. Demond Means, Superintendent of McQuanfield. We had five meetings in spring. We were tasked to, to do the following. Share and analyze strategies, first go out and collect all the strategies, and then share and analyze those strategies from our respective schools. Vote on the ten or so, there's a couple that have a little bit more. Best strategies in the areas of the four major areas, which were effective instruction, student-teacher relationships, family-community engagement, and school and instructional leadership. Then we had to design a user-friendly way to ship all this information with everybody else. So I said, all right. It was very strange to be a part of the task force because we all went into the task force. All of us started talking, like, do you know why you were picked? We're like, no, do you know why you were picked? Because when you do these things on a daily basis, it's hard to say, oh, this is the spectacular thing we do that really makes a difference. But we had to start talking about what, what were the commonalities amongst our schools to try to really delineate what were the effective strategies, what were the best practices, and what are we doing that other schools might not? So this is a long conversation to actually get to the, the meat and the potatoes. So here are the top ten recommendations from each area. The ones in red are ones that I specifically spoke to or that stood out in my mind for each area. I mean, effective, effective instruction, I'm not reading through all of those. One that really catches my eye, though, is the personalization, voice, and choice, which is giving students different opportunities to demonstrate a competency in an area, and not everybody's doing the exact same thing, which is huge in classrooms. The rigorous integrated content, all of the work that our district has done to match our education and our teaching to state standards is, has, you know, rocketed us forward. I really truly believe that. So you can see all the other things that were in this category. Student-teacher relationships. I guess if Stan Mack had a baby and it was this, this type of work, this would be mine. I absolutely think that relationships are the, the number-one key to success with our students. We need to know who they are, we need to know what they need, and we need to give it to them. Angelist and mentoring students are similar concepts. They're about identifying students that are not connected to our schools and finding ways to get them connected. And celebrating success kind of teaches on all of our PBIS work that we're doing. Family and community engagement. Community partnerships, that's another thing I think Oshkosh is very strong in, is that our business partnerships and getting people in from, from the community to talk with us and going out to community areas, I think that's one of our, one of our strengths. And then for school and instructional leadership, our shared vision and our, and leadership, we, we have a common vision, we have a common goal, we work for it, we work on it together. I know that every district is supposed to and that that's the way it should look, but it doesn't. And when you have discussions with other districts, you realize that. So I think this is one of the pivotal pieces for Oshkosh. So what are the implications of the task force? So we put this together, we said, these are it, and those are, those are pretty bare-bones explanations. If you go to this website, you'll, you can click on it, it gives you a written explanation. And actually, we have videotape of us speaking to each of these things. You can see someone speak about what it was and go into the more specific details of it, so if you want more information, you can do that. But what are the implications for Oshkosh? We need to continue to do great things, we need to continue with our leadership and our vision and the education that we're doing in our classrooms, but we have got to build, build, build relationships. Don't be afraid to share what's working for you as an educator. Go out and share that, you know, spread the word, the good word, because lots of good things are going on. And consider peer coaching so that other people can glom onto those ideas and, and help spread the good education that's going on. You can, oh, do you want to click on the website? Oh, you're over here. Do you want to click on the website? For just a second, this is what it looks like. It's just dpi.gov, and then on the right side of the main page for DPI is Excellence for All. And so the four main categories are on the left, and then you can see, as you, if you click into one, then you could see the ten standards underneath, and you can click on each one of those, and you can hear someone talk about it, and it goes on and on. It's, it's quite impressive. They did a really nice job of putting this all together, and it is very easy to work through, so I enjoyed it. It was a lot of, a lot of work, but a lot of fun. Special thank yous to the Webster Stanley Middle School staff for going above and beyond daily to reach the needs of all students, for sharing your ideas, and for being a constant source of inspiration to me and now lots of people across the state, because we get to see all their ideas. Philip DeMash for his leadership as principal of both E. Cook and Webster Stanley Middle School, and allowing me to represent the group. The reason I bring up the E. Cook thing is because I really think, since the research on which schools were closing the achievement gap was over multiple years, we have to thank our feeder schools for, you know, laying great foundation, sending the kids to us, you know, prepared and already ahead of the game. So the elementary schools that, that feed into Webster Stanley are doing a spectacular job as well. Julie Moyer for her leadership during all of that time, and she helped me write some of the strategies and some of the leadership stuff, so it was very helpful. All the members of the Oshkosh Area School District and its board for the common vision and the support that we need to move that vision forward, and to our students and our families for putting our trust in the Oshkosh Area School District, and we hope that we're serving you to the best of our abilities.
Looking at this list of schools that participated and seeing that we are, from a quick glance, it looks like we're probably about in the middle of the percentage for economically disadvantaged, what did you see as you were just mentioning all the things that you could see that we were doing and presenting? Are there things that you saw that other schools are doing that we could be adapting?
There were a lot of commonalities between what we did. We might have worded it differently or called it a different thing. A lot of schools are, are working with extra time, doing stuff before school and after school, providing extra services. That's a big thing, that was a big common thing among schools.
How are they affording that? How are they budgeting for that? Do you know if they're using?
Some of them are private schools, and so it was part of, is built into as part of their school day, and even the kids were required to stay longer and stuff, and so it was different. Because it was such a cross-section of schools and types of schools, it wasn't easy to compare all of us at the same time. And it was done intentionally that way to give us the broadest sense of what was going on. But then to compare, I mean, we were definitely the whitest school there, school district there. I mean, there's no doubt about it. Our, our ethnic minority percentage was far, far, you know, we had schools that had one percent white that were representing there, so this is our current enrollment.
Yeah, but to speak to that, Allison, about talking about extending the school day, the feeder schools that feed into Webster Stanley Middle School, every single one of them has a CLC or an extended school day, which we call Lighted Schoolhouse. And so that's Washington, that's E. Cook, and that's Webster Elementary. And so all of those have programming that's extending the school day. It's not just after-school care, it's extending the learning. And so those are things that we're currently working on within our district through partnerships, expanding that out, because that has been proven to work. All of our, our elementary schools, that are schools of promise or that are showing that are beating the odds, have that extended learning. And so I think that's a piece, as a board, that we would really like you to, to consider and to, to look at. How do we find those resources? And, and we're working that, on that as an administrative team, but to extend that learning. So it's, sometimes it just, it takes time. It's not about the amount, but sometimes it's the time in extending that beyond the school day.
Thanks.
And what makes such a difference is really the follow-up on being prepared on a, on a more co-equal basis for the next day, with the after-school programs of having supervised and guided reinforcement that may not occur in the family home, but that it does occur in the extended day helps that those individual children be so well-prepared for the next day and to be on par with peers and, and first of all, also not lose the self-image of coming to school, being not on par and in the same position with, with their peers. Because losing and feeling the lack of integrity, the lack of, of self-worth that occurs when you're coming to school and you're once again not in the position to compete with your peers in the classroom on the very next day, and that's where those extended efforts make all the difference, especially for families, for children who don't necessarily have that support system that, as, as, you know, middle and upper-class and non-minority families many, many times have of parents sitting with a child at eight-thirty at night, making sure that they are ready for tomorrow. And we need to step into that gap to make a difference so that we deal with children on par with their, their peers. And in a school with, that is, would be Webster Stanley Middle and our feeder schools would reflect very closely our minority count of the district, if eighty percent of your peers are able to operate and have the support system operate at another level. And then we quickly see the reason why at third or fourth grade or beyond or even younger, especially African-American males, get into issues of discipline and when, when they're feeling frustrated because self-worth and integrity has been lost already because of not being able to compete on that same level. And having worked in this area for years and years, I have so absolutely, and that's where I'm looking forward to as we integrate technology into, into our schools with, with children to progress independently, that they will be able to make progress and to deal with both gains and assessment and recovery without losing self-integrity or self-worth and integrity in front of peers. That is such a, the, in adolescent, young adolescents, machismo and self-worth is so key to the success. And I've discovered a whole lot of things about, on the, on the steps of the Wisconsin State Capitol, Stacy and I had a chance to discover how common our backgrounds were in working with students at risk, and we were particularly pleased and blessed to have Stacy working in our district. She is kind of the third leg of, of our Fond du Lac Exchange program. We have lost, we have gained Mike, we've gained Sue, and we've gained Stacy, all from Fond du Lac. What a wonderful addition to the school district over time. Thank you.
Thank you. One other thing I would add, when you ask other things, what is, you know, implications for Oshkosh, is really that celebrating success piece, and I think our promoting PBIS and constantly reminding kids that they are doing well and they don't have to make, I always tell the kids, you don't have to be perfect. I just want to be one step better than you were today. Don't be perfect tomorrow, be one step better. And every day, it'll get better for them. So when we have the, the opportunity to celebrate those little successes, we see a lot more.
And as far as assignment this year, Stacy has moved to North High School and is providing leadership in, in one of our programs for at-risk youth at.
You know, I do have a question. You know, I, I, I trust we're all from the mindset that this gap doesn't have to exist, right? Nowhere is it written that this must be, right? Despite the, the other, the ancillary factors that determines where we are in life. And I'm just wondering, you know, being at the bottom of the national statistics is alarming, to say the least. Is there data, or do you happen to have offhand? I assume that countries that have a more federalized educational system, Europe or Canada or Scandinavia, you don't see this disparity, is my sense. I don't have any data on it. Do you have, like, do you know if the US is at the?
We didn't talk about any of the international stuff at all, so I'm not certain.
I guess I'm getting to the, getting to the, the hope that, you know, again, that nowhere is it written that we have to have this gap, right? That other nations perhaps have found a way to tackle this issue with?
Well, in other states, so it's not, it can't be too far out of our reach.
Right, right. Thank you.
Well, I remember Kentucky tackling this issue years ago, and they were actually kind of charged with turning it around, and they did. And so maybe there's something to learn from other states that have found themselves in this situation and how they turned that around.
And to a certain extent, middle-class and white high achievement in states that have some of the highest outcomes create a larger gap as well. And that's part of the issue, is that high achievement and very close to this, very close to the very high achievement gap is, is Minnesota with also having very high test scores in the general population. scores in the general population. But it creates the gap. It enhances the reality of the gap. In states in the South where those scores are not as high, the gap isn't quite as big, but the overall achievement is less. And that's for all students. And so that's part of the reality that we definitely struggle with. But, and Stacy's comment about the fact that children come to us, and not just children of color, but a good number of our children coming from not as rich households, enriched households from a standpoint of environment, come and are teachers of, in 4K and kindergarten. I can tell you from my spending time, and I've done thousands of preschool assessments back in my previous life, the reality is that the achievement gap exists the day the child arrives at school. And then we're battling the issue of catch-up right from the beginning, because children growing up in families of poverty don't have the opportunities of experience that, and don't have the words in life that middle-class families have. And we struggle with that, and that's one of our greatest travesties in society. This is, it is something that I'm so tied to of understanding how we can deal with that, but it also relates certainly to issues of poverty. Finding ways to have children grow in an enriched environment is a critical part of future success.
I have one last question. When you were talking about building relationships, do you mean between the children and the teacher? And then was it in that report where there was one school that talked about the cohorts staying with the same teacher for several years? And that's, you know, when you look at the actual year of school, they're there for, you know, nine months, less vacations, and how do you build a really strong relationship with a child only to watch them then leave your room after? So how do, is that what you mean when you say build relationships or?
Even if it's just within that year, as a foster parent, I smile because I'm a foster parent. They, how do you build that relationship? You build that relationship for as long as you have them and do the best you can while you have them and pray that you've given them the skills to succeed when they go. But there are a lot of things that we can do within our schools, and it's really about listening to our kids and listening to what they have. They really have a lot to teach us. And we're so used to being in charge and being in front of the classrooms that sometimes we forget that we're there to listen to them and learn from them as well. And then it really changes in how we teach and what that looks like in the classroom when we take the time to find out who's there and what their world is like before they get to us. So it's recognizing them as people, it's honoring them as people, not just recognizing that they, here's an example, just last time we had something we were thinking about. We have, we had, I had a girl last year who wanted to shorten her name to two initials because she had a difficult name from an African dialect. And she got so tired of people slaughtering it, she wanted to just go by two initials. And I think those are, they seem like little things, but it's a travesty when we can't take the time to learn a person's name and pronounce it correctly for them. It's little things. You don't, you know, they don't have to, you don't have to know everything about them when they leave, but things like that, we should all be able to do.
Thank you.
And there's one other issue that haunts this school district as well as virtually every school district in the country, is the fact that our colleges of education are not able to recruit and train teachers of color. One of the, it's a major loss that we have in our society that with the exception of a handful of urban schools that are able to attract and retain teachers of color to work in schools, to become role models, as well as be able to instill not only in their relationships with students, but to be role models for non, for white teachers in working environment. That makes such a difference in being able to change that entire experience. When we're operating in a 80-plus percent white environment, finding individuals and who are prepared to come in makes all the difference in the world. And the issue of being able to hire and employ everyone from bus drivers to teachers' aides to paraprofessionals, to principals, as, it changes the entire environment in serving population, because there is not a way that if students of color are able to see themselves as potentially being in that role, it makes all the difference in the world.
Yes. Well, even look in this room.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Right. And I think taking steps forward to help teachers become more culturally responsive and delve into courageous conversations. And people are afraid to say the word "black" out loud. And I'm like, okay, you know, for fear of being called a racist. But the reality is, we have to learn to be able to say those words and understand when it becomes a racial conversation. Or having a racial conversation doesn't make you a racist.
Right.
And that is some of the things that are difficult and people are afraid to broach. But there are definitely things that we need to be thinking about and working towards.
And unless you've been extensively trained in this world, the issue of understanding white privilege is the ultimate issue of a deficit that we create. And we all, in this room, we all live with white privilege every day.
This report was of great interest to me, because, as I believe all of you believe, as I do, it's very important that we educate all the children. And while much of your data and your comments tonight spoke about the differences in performance with Caucasian children and children of color, I believe that the same, not the data, but the same conversation could be held in terms of a couple of other achievement gaps that would also continue to be with us every day, namely differences between those who are economically advantaged and those who are disadvantaged, those who are in special education programs and those who are not. To me, this ties directly into our strategic goal, I believe it's number four, on equity. And there are lots of ways of defining equity. But one of the ways that I'm looking at that is that it shouldn't matter where a child goes to school in this district. They should all be in a school where they can achieve at a high level. It was probably, I don't know, I don't remember exactly, probably 15, 20 years ago, there was a lot of rhetoric on a national level in terms of closing achievement gaps. And I attended a couple of conferences and heard some outstanding educators in other states talk about programs called 90-90-90. I don't know if you're familiar with those, but 90% poverty, 90% children of color, and performing at the 90th percentile, or 90% of the kids achieving great success in school. I don't know to what extent that data is relevant today, but it may be worth looking at. Another thing that struck me as I was listening to you and you were talking about relationships, relationships, relationships. Again, there are various ways of defining that term, and sometimes you can use the term partnerships or connections interchangeably, sometimes not, depending on your context. But as you were talking, I was thinking about some partnerships that exist between the school districts, some local businesses, and some individuals who have stepped forward to promote learning at a young age. We all know that early learning is important. And we've seen a medical doctor from one of the local facilities join forces with at least one school board member, maybe two school board members, and promote programs on ice skating and cross-country skiing. And somebody might be thinking, "Well, what does that have to do with achievement gap?" Well, it helps build vocabulary, it helps build life experience and self-confidence so that children can enjoy success in school. There are also two programs that have been, that have been implemented for, well, one is quite new, actually. It's called the Bourne Learning Trails. And that's a new partnership between a couple of businesses, including Dr. Pepper and, I'm sorry, just lost the name of the other one, Affinity Healthcare Systems and the Ashkosh Area United Way. In Rural Park, which is that park between the, I believe it's the Masonic Temple and the YMCA, there's a, there are a series of vertical posts that the Ashkosh School District also was a collaborator on. And there are some things painted on the sidewalks so that children and parents can use those to help build vocabulary, engage in some physical activity, and do some learning. So they're excellent opportunities for young children. They're all free, they can be used extensively. And another one of those was recently installed at Franklin Elementary School, with a third one in the works to be implemented at Carl Trager Elementary School in the spring, when the ground is not frozen and they can sink the posts. And finally, there's the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, one of my favorite programs. This is a free program to any child with an Ashkosh mailing address between the ages of birth and five. You just need, the parent or grandparent just needs to fill out an application form, can send it back to the Ashkosh Area United Way. And what this does is it provides a free book to a child every month until they turn age five. So our preschoolers, regardless of socioeconomic level, whether or not they're children of color, whether or not they're special education children, all would qualify for these free books. United Way recently collaborated with UW-Ashkosh, two reading professors, including Michelle Lena Manzi, who's recently retired. And they wanted to know if these books made a difference. So they were buying these books, sending these books, literally hundreds of children receive these books every month. They wanted to know if sending these books made any difference. They found that, yes, they do, the children are being read to. And they also found that parents are reading more, so they're modeling that for their children. So they're helping those children build vocabulary. So I think that there are some things that we can build on that are already out there in the community. And you mentioned the CLC programs. But this is a, this is a topic that is really important. We need to make sure that every child is successful. We can't afford to lose any children. I feel very strongly about that, as I'm sure all of the rest of you do, so that's not a hot news topic tonight. But I really feel strongly about the need to make sure that we're not losing children. There are so many things going on in the world today that can be challenges to success in school. And whatever we can do while they're in the schools for those roughly 180 days, roughly seven hours a day, we can really make a difference. So I applaud those of you who are doing this work each and every day and hope that we can continue to look for ways to close these achievement gaps. It's not just Milwaukee that has those issues. Earlier this fall, when the school board looked at some of the data in terms of some of the minority groups, whether they're children of color, economically disadvantaged, or special ed, there are some big gaps right here in Ashkosh. And while I applaud the success at Webster Stanley and the feeder schools, there's still much work to do. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you for stressing the student and teacher relationships, because, especially from a student perspective, it makes all the difference in the world, knowing that you not only have a teacher that cares about what you're learning, so now it's, you not only owe it to yourself to learn it, you owe it to your teacher, because they're counting on you to figure it out. And that gives us another reason, even if you don't understand the concept completely one day, you're going to go back, because you know that the teacher who likes and cares about you is going to make sure that you don't slip through the cracks. And that's why I feel like we're really lucky at North. I feel like we have a great group of staff that knows that that's what needs to happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have no resolutions this evening, so are there any future agenda items? Seeing none, announcements?
I believe that we've heard this evening that North High School is having a Veterans Day program next week Tuesday, which I believe is at the same time as the Policy and Governance meeting. And I'm wondering, no, it's not.
That meeting was changed to the 17?
Yeah, no, they're trying to change it to, I think it's the?
Monday the 17?
17, yes.
At 9?
Yeah, at 9.
Okay, I think that's what's out there. You're safe.
Sherry's been working on getting that shifted.
Okay. Because that program that North does is outstanding. I know Perry Tippler also has a Veterans Day program next week and?
Wes does, too, I think.
I believe that's true. So I think it would be good if those of us who would like to attend those and honor our students and our veterans would be able to do that. Thank you.
Certainly. Could I get a motion to adjourn? To executive session for the purposes of, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under state statute 19.851(c), discuss individual administrator's compensation. And two, considering the disciplinary data of specific persons under Wisconsin State statute 19.851(f), review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engaged in conduct while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others, and endangered the property, health, or safety of a school authority, or endangered the property, health, or safety of any employee or school board member of the school district under 120.13(c) of Wisconsin State statutes.
Second.
Call the roll.
Aye. Gito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner? Garner, aye. Gertrude? Gertrude, aye. Seconda? Seconda, aye. Beenhaw?
Aye.
Beenhaw, aye. No, you carry.
We stand adjourned.